Hope it's time. You ready, Cliff?
Yeah.
If you folks will join me in the flag salute, please. Flag allegiance.
To the Twilight and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, July 18th. Got a lot on the agenda, it looked like. We've got a nice crowd here, of course, but I'd like Cliff to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Eric, come in, Eric. Good afternoon, good evening, Eric.
Good evening. Be pretty short here with mine. No permits tonight to report on. Just a reminder, the LRSP meeting is tomorrow with KDOT, 1 to 5 here in the commission room, open to the public if anyone wants to attend. Asphalting. If we ever get out of Hyattville, it'll be a miracle, but anyhow, lack about 100 and 125 yards being done down Hyattville today. We had a little technical difficulty there at the end, ran down an oil at the plant and blew hydraulic fitting on the city's lay down machine. So, it shut us down about 100, 125 yards short. So, we'll be back up going tomorrow, hopefully, and have that finished and be moving to 55th and Yale.
Any update on our paper?
I called on our paper and they have not got it in.
Okay.
Yet.
Oh, that's at Van Cal Borcat?
That's at Foley.
Foley, okay.
In Chanute. Belly dump's still hauling rock. We did haul rock last week while we were down there, so that is keeping gravel going on the road. We are scheduled for a blast at Blake Quarry this Wednesday. Just let you know that. Probably be somewhere 50, 60 ton there and then we'll crush everything that we have in the bottom.
I keep hearing good things about the crusher.
Yeah, yeah, it's putting out a lot of rock, so things are going real well there. Having def issues with a couple of our dump trucks. The Sterling is up at inland, went into limp mode. Anyhow, just a def issue. And then the Mack, we had a Mack go down last Friday, or Thursday. Went into limp mode and we can't get it to reset, so we're gonna have to take it and have it looked at as well. So, just part of the, having the vehicles with def. So, roadside mowing, just kinda give you a heads up on that. We are roadside mowing right now. Divided the county up into four quadrants. Use roughly 125th and 54 Highway. Split there. Four quadrants, have a mower in each quadrant. Then we have the sidearm mower going as well, where we can keep tires and rims up and going on them, so. But we are mowing and keeping that going. Also, 165th and Tomahawk had a grader operator do about a half mile of ditching up in there and done a very good job with his slopes and what have you, and back slopes and, and kinda try and push a little bit with our graders to see if we can get that, get some ditching going. I know that's something he's done, along with the crossroad tubes and the Colvert crew's working very hard, trying to get some crossroad tubes put in as well. So, 215th down there, we're waiting on some tubes, 30 inch tubes to come in. Just back north of Hackberry there, I believe it is, we got three tubes that need to be replaced. They're rotted out on the bottom and anyhow, we're waiting on those to come in. Soon as they come in, we'll get them replaced, so.
And once you get on 55th, you moving there, or you going out west, or what's your?
We're gonna do Hyattville, grab it, or not Hyattville, I'm stuck on Hyattville, we've been there so long, but we're going Union Town and then we'll come in and do the lake and then we'll go to 15.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's our, that's our scheduled pattern, so.
Good.
Any questions for me, comments?
Well, we got an email, I don't remember what it was, some nice lady was to you. You remember what it was? I don't remember what it was. I guess I can't ask you.
I'm not for sure. I go back and look.
Oh, it was pretty, it's all pretty simple, so.
Okay. We may have already taken care of it then.
Probably did.
I'm not sure.
Probably did.
Try and take care of them as soon as they come in, if we can.
Oh, 1947, Indian, yeah. Had a call or whistle, had a large gravel around it, so.
Okay.
I'm sure you're taking care of it, so.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Cliff, anything?
Thank you very much.
I guess you don't know anything about the bridge yet, from KDOT.
Which one?
Uh, on 215th.
The one on 215th? No, I haven't heard anything.
I didn't expect you.
I did get a, a rough, rough estimate from an engineer today and we're looking somewhere around, and I, I wanna say he said around two, two and a half to replace the, the bridge. That's just a rough estimate right now with pricing and what have you.
Two and a half million?
So, yeah, two and a half million.
I make that 800,000 grade crossing look cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
It might, I don't know. That's, I bet you Cliff did.
Anyhow, we are looking at some grants and what have you, so.
Cliff, and I did ask Eric to add to his grant wish list, or still structure down on 250, that old one. We just need to pan it or treat it or something, so he's gonna add it to his grant list.
Right.
Sure.
And then I think that pretty well gets that bridge.
It does, 'cause we put a lot of red carpet under there.
Yeah, up to code, not going, whatever.
Yeah.
It'll make it last longer.
Their specs or what have you, so.
So.
Or get off the list or what have you, so.
That shouldn't be too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing like that one.
No.
No, so anyhow, anything else?
No.
Okay.
You run my day, you said two million.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Isn't it like one and a half million?
Yeah, but it's, you know how prices go.
Would be considered grade crossing, or is that out of?
I, I would be fine with that, I don't know.
You know, that was on that inspection list, one of the choices at that time, it was like a.
I think you have to look at everything. I know walking under it, I did last year, it's a little. Yeah. It's a little scary.
I've walked under it, yes. It's time to do something, so.
We need to do something, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Eric. Okay, I'd like to have an executive session talk about.
Okay.
Personnel.
Who, uh?
I want the two commissioners, Susan, County Attorney, Shane, and Justin Meeks, for 10 minutes. Is that, I don't know. 15, 15 minutes?
15 minutes, okay. Make a motion for executive session, KS A 75, 43, 19B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Be per job performance, is that what you said? Two commissioners, Susan Bancroft, Justin Meeks, County Counselor Tiana.
Yes.
Oh, your last name, sorry.
McAvoy.
McAvoy. And Shane Walker. And it'll be for 15 minutes. We will return here at, I gotta add, 6:23.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I don't care.
I don't know either, but it's fine. It's working.
It did. It could come. I'm sorry. I need to talk to this one.
You were talking something?
Yeah, it did.
Where's Jimmy?
I think he's coming. Jim?
Okay.
Water? Okay. Make a motion, resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
See, I make a motion to amend the agenda and remove Matt Quick hours of operation from the printed agenda.
Okay. I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. We need to consider appointment. Excuse me, I have a...
Wait. Oh, I skipped that, didn't I?
Yeah, you skipped me. That's all right. I'm used to it.
Yep.
We need to appoint a commissioner to the Bourbon County Ready, the dudes who'd lend her's resignation. And I'd like to make a recommendation, that would be Commissioner Beth, to appoint, come to the Bourbon County Ready Board. You have to second yourself.
I guess I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Bourbon County, intent to exceed revenue neutral rate. That must be Ms. Susan, our chief financial officer.
Let me get my paper. Can I leave one laying in front of you all? Yeah, do you want one? So after our discussions last, last week, we had talked about keeping our levy flat, which that would exceed the revenue neutral rate. And so that's what this is, and it's our notice to the county clerk. Gives us a little bit more time to discuss all the requests that have been made for this budget year also.
This doesn't decide what we're doing, just letting people know what we might or could possibly do if we chose to.
That is correct.
Okay.
Because she has to send letters out, so we have to certify to her by the 20th.
And send letter, where do they go?
To all tax, everybody.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I'm curious, the hearing, is there a direction from the state on that, or what does that entail?
I just picked, I picked the latest date that we could do the hearing.
Sure, but I mean, is that, I guess, is that, I think that people come in and get to stand up there and...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So they get to talk, you'll have to do the revenue neutral rate hearing first.
Okay.
And because of how I've done this date, we'll do it first, and then we'll talk about the budget hearing. So they'll be in the same day, but we'll present why we're exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And then you'll go straight into your budget.
And then we have to vote on the budget that night?
Yeah. Unless you want to do this, we can change this date and do this sooner. But it can't be before August, I'll have, August 20th. So it has to be, you know...
I think we know that it's separated. We could give us a little more time to think.
And allow people to have a voice, I think it would be.
Sure. Sure. So any, any date after August 20th, do you want to do that first Tuesday in September?
I'm going to address the public for a second, if y'all don't mind. Would you prefer that to be at night? Ann, you have an opinion on that?
I'm kind of liking the night meetings. I mean...
I mean, it would allow more people to show up to the hearing.
Yeah. Yeah. I think so.
I don't care about the city. When is Thursday? Tuesdays? Yep. But do they have it every Tuesday? Every other, right? So we need to have it Tuesday or Monday? Anybody?
I like to say it's due every Tuesday evening. The first Tuesday of the month, every evening?
That's the cities.
Oh, that's the city.
First and third is the cities.
Okay.
So you could do, the 13th would be the week before the 20th. So if you wanted to give a week's notice, or if you wanted to do two weeks, would be the 6th, September 6th.
Oh, I think a week is okay.
The earliest we could do it would be August 23rd. So there's a 23rd, the 30th, September 6th, September 13th. But we have to certify, certify by the 20th.
September 20th, yes.
Yeah.
We have to certify by the 20th?
Yeah. Like we have to adopt by the 20th.
Adopt the budget by the 20th.
Yeah.
And Justin, this is important, sorry, people. And if we don't adopt by the 20th? In violation of what, and what happens?
Don't you get the warrants and stuff? You have to have a budget certified.
I don't really know what the law is on that. I'd have to, I'd have to look at it, to be quite honest.
It's kind of a new area of law, but you'd see me in violation.
Yeah, you would. You're supposed to certify to the clerk.
Because I have to have that to send out, to do the abstracts, to send out tax statements. Old Patty sends out tax statements, but I have to do the abstract, and I have to have that, or you won't get any money.
And I mean, cash basis violation, because you want to have any money coming in?
If you're trying to avoid other meetings, I would recommend doing the 30th of August for your R and R. And then you could do the 13th for your budget, which could also be the 20th, depending on how the, the 30th goes. But that'll give you two extra weeks in there.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I like to see both of them meeting in the evening.
And this has to be set in stone, because it has to be published in the paper 10 days prior to, and it has to go out in that letter. So once that letter goes out, we cannot resend that publication, so you cannot change the date.
Right.
Good enough.
So August 30th?
Yep.
At 6:00 PM?
Yes. Be great.
And we need to, but... I guess Ashley's just the only one that has to sign this.
Yeah. Yep. I'll reprint it and get her a new one.
Okay, perfect.
You're done with that, Susan?
Do we need a motion that says that we are planning on, with make a motion to, I guess, to, for Ashley to publicize the intent to exceed revenue neutral rate? And the hearing will be held August 30th at... No, August. August 30th at 6:00 PM at 2010, or 210 South National Forks, Kansas 6671, so in this room.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Quipman-Beth.
Bobby, got a sec? Basically, I just had a quick question. I let you sit down, I guess. I know it's only been a week, but have you seen, I mean, had any luck? Where are we at? I guess just an update.
So since the 6th of July, we've had two applicants. Last, or on the 7th, we called to schedule an interview with one of them. And they didn't answer. So then on Tuesday, the 12th, I seen that individual out in the public, and I asked him if we had called. He said, yeah, he didn't answer. I said, okay. He said, I've decided to do something else. I said, okay, well, you know, we've upped our starting wages. And he goes, what are they? And I said, 1,450. He said, yeah, that ain't enough. I said, okay, fair enough. Then we had one again on the 12th, and no phone calls was given because of her background. So we are having open interviews this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00, or 4:00 to 8:00, out at the jail. We're gonna hit it again real hard on Facebook and share it, and hopefully everybody's not at the circus on Thursday, and they want to come out and have open interviews. There's been some success with those in surrounding counties, so we figured we would test the waters and see what's out there. So, and as of tomorrow, I will be down to six correctional officers. I have currently reassigned my, both lieutenants are working shift work. And my captain will be going to a shift as well. And I'm going to be utilizing off-duty deputies and myself, when applicable, for transports for inmates from other counties back to here. And I don't have a set date yet from Lynn County, but they're going to be opening their facility very soon. So I'm hoping to get some of our inmates closer. That'll cut down on drive time and maintenance and fuel, but until I get a number from them, I can't do anything.
How many inmates do you have out of county right now?
I counted them this morning. We brought two back, and then we took four back after court this morning. I believe it was right at 25, right around there. And then we still got some in, in-house, and that's just because can't find homes for them at the moment.
You got 25 out of county?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So...
Good luck.
It's all I can do. Any questions from anybody? Call me if you have concerns before I leave, so I can answer about the jail.
You probably need to get back out to the fair. Sorry, I forgot.
No, 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 you're fine. You're fine. I'm, this is my job that comes first. Nothing?
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Quipman.
Sheriff Martin?
Sheriff Budget.
Yeah, but I just have a few questions, if you got a second. So, after looking at this, there was some money for vehicles, is that correct? And you can stop me if you, if did I pass it on. I guess, is it on the front page? No, it's down there. You've got to remember now.
Yeah, we're supposed to have gotten received, too. There's a misunderstanding in regards to where the money was coming from. Apparently it was coming from the sales tax, I believe, jail operations?
It is or isn't?
The vehicle was coming out of the public outlay, which made, she moved it to...
Okay, okay. And I don't know much about vehicles, or cop cars, sheriff's cars, whatever. The highway patrol vehicles that the city bought? I mean, are they not an option, or would they be an option, just an idea to save money?
These are going to be the pros and the cons of Kansas Highway Patrol. And I'll say this, I believe in the Kansas Highway Patrol 100%. I love those guys. I mean, they're there when called upon. But their cars, yes, they are, people are saying, well, they're maintained, they have maintenance records and everything else. So do we. Our cars are taken care of. But honestly, not to pick on the KHB, but have you seen them drive their cars before? You'd be going down the highway, and they'll pass you like nothing. Going to another call, three counties away, at high speeds. And sitting there. And that's a lot of, lot of hours, a lot of hard work on those engines. Now, if you're going to compare it to the city here, the city only travels about five square miles, and they don't go as... But to me, those are very hard-driven vehicles, and all you're doing is taking them out of one environment and out of the other. And they're only a 30-day warranty, with the new cars, you're up to three years. One of the things that we're finding problems with, or that we have run into, or that we are going to run into, is that some of the equipment that are in the vehicles now cannot be transferred over to other vehicles because of the different designs of how the cars are now. So for example, a transport cage, a transport cage today in our SUVs, Explorers, cannot be transferred to a newer model of the next floor SUV because of the design of the transport cages, the interior design of it.
Oh, good.
Is there about full 300,000 that was in your budget? Is that what it said for the vehicles? How much exactly are you going to request then? Because I think we have budgeted $78,000 every two years we have one roll off. So like, we were at least purchasing for three?
We're looking at, I had reached out to several of the sheriffs through emails to see what the cost of the cars are at. They're looking at anywhere to 50,000 to 50,000 per car, fully equipped, ready to go. So...
Say that again, Bill, sorry?
50,000 to 55,000. That's the max. That's getting everything going. So now I will, depending if our light bar will be transferred over to a new car. We already know that your transport cage, we're going to have issues with. Transport for canines, cars, if we go down that road, which they're still several years out, that's something to think about. Some of the lighting, we will, I'd have to get with the outfitters to make sure where we're going. Get with the outfitters to make sure that they are able to take that equipment and put it in the other one.
And so we're thinking two, two cars this year?
I'm going to order two cars this year, and hopefully we can get two more. We just got a truck back that had the engine replaced in it. So we've already gone through two vehicles that with engines replaced in it. We're well over... And if I would have known these were the questions, I would have had the mileage and everything of all the cars here, and the maintenance and stuff like that. But yes, our fleet is getting very old and very worn out.
I do have a couple. You're done there, Quipman, so...
Yeah, go ahead.
Bill, and I ask these questions because your budget, you submitted a possibly five mil increase if we was to approve your budget. And it's my opinion that Bourbon County taxpayers cannot bear that, it's just time. That's, you know, we already are having a problem with the possibility of our high taxes. We talk about it every week in here. Here's my two questions for you. Now, you mentioned that you didn't want a fuel tank out there because of the floodplain. That's not correct. The floodplain not even on the county property. And today, you could save 82 cents a gallon if Judy Fuel brought that to you. 82 cents a gallon times 15 vehicles daily? Bill, that's $100,000 a year.
And I don't think that it was because of the floodplain. The comment that I made, if I recall, was that if a tank gets dipped over and gets spilled onto the ground, and it flows to the creek that runs through there...
We'd have to build a burn to seek the fire marshal.
That's the only concern. But you know what? If that's what you want to do, let's do it. Let's move forward with it. Let's make that decision.
I want to help you run your department as you want to.
Now, let's, let's do it today. You get everything set up, and let's move forward with it.
You give me permission to run the sheriff's department?
You go right in. You go right in.
Yeah, you may give permission to run the jail, too?
Make the note that you want to add the fuel point, and we'll move forward with that.
One last question. You had asked for more deputies. In 2021, you had 2,253 traffic stops. Traffic stop, not call. 928 was within the city limits. If you stay out of the city limits, would you need two more deputies?
I'm glad that you brought that up, because now you're going into criminal investigations and stuff. And with that being said, we will have to go into executive session to explain those reasons why. And I also have brought Deputy Davidson with me, to be part of that executive session, to explain why we do what we do in regards to that. So if you want to go into executive session, discuss what's going on in regards to criminal investigations, that's why we're in town, let's call an executive session.
Yes, we'd like to have the county attorney, county council, where possible.
That would be the three commissioners, Deputy Kevin Davidson and Justin Meeks.
And county attorney. I'd like to have her there.
Yeah.
That's good. Yeah. Beth, you want to make that motion?
What would it be under?
Job performance?
Uh-uh.
No, no. Can't be...
Say that again? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You good with that? Okay. How long? What do you think? How long do you think?
Well, let's do about, we'll go for 10 minutes for now. If there's additional questions, we can come back out and go back in for another.
Okay.
That's another time.
Okay. Okay. Yep. I'm making a, make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B2, for the consultation with an attorney for the public, body, or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. It would be the two commissioners.
Justin Meeks.
Counselor Meeks.
County Attorney Prosecutor Tiana McElroy, myself, and Detective David, Kevin Davidson.
As stated by Sheriff Martin, that people would be in there for 10 minutes. We will return here at 6:53.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
And this is really a serious question, but I don't know nothing about running sheriff departments. Why do other sheriff departments have zero overtime? You have book of, I mean honestly, that's a, it's a difference in staffing, a difference in your operation.
Staffing.
Staffing. They have more staff people?
Yes.
So they have zero overtime?
I wouldn't say they're gonna have zero overtime. They're gonna have overtime because of court. They might have something to do with the call out because of serving a search warrant. Like Cherokee County served a search warrant in Galena. He probably called out all, you know, his response team for the sheriff's department.
Very minimal.
Yeah, very minimal.
Yeah.
And also, there's also, you know, you can't eliminate overtime in law enforcement. You can't. You've got court appearances. And when they go to court and they go to the second floor and then they realize that they don't have to testify, then that's two hours overtime. Especially on their day off. You know, they're making arrangements to go to court. Certain reports, they have to be done before they go home off of your shift if it's their Friday and they're off for the next two days or three days. That report has to be done because if not, the county attorney's sending me an email saying, where's that report? There are certain timeframes that reports have to be done. And there's, and our policy is, is that if you're going on days off, all reports need to be done. Because if somebody calls me and says, hey, I need information about this incident. And I look up that case and there's nothing written in the narrative part, how can I explain anything of what's going on, especially if the press happens to call? I'm sorry, I don't have no information for you at that time. That's pretty embarrassing. So are you gonna eliminate overtime to zero? No, you're not.
Do you feel like the crime rate in Bourbon County's went up that much since you've become a sheriff to keep growing your budget? Hundred twenty-seven percent?
Two questions in regards to that. Has crime gone up? Yes, because we have more people investigating it, just like the meeting we just had with Deputy Davidson, okay?
Doing a better job.
So there you go. So in regards to the hundred and twenty-seven percent increase since twenty-ten?
Yeah, ten, twelve years, something like that.
Twelve years.
Yeah, since twenty-ten. I would like to make a note, I wasn't, I didn't become sheriff until twenty thirteen.
I know that, Bill. I know. I didn't say he was, I didn't say he was responsible.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, you know, I wasn't sheriff until twenty thirteen, so.
But it's continued since.
But if you were native sheriff, the year that it went up was twenty thirteen. And I, so.
And that's because that shows a proactivity. And so, and I'll throw this out there. What kind of sheriff's department do you want? You want a proactive one, the meeting that we just had, or reactive?
Let me ask you a question first. This is my second question. That red light on your speaker? And look at those folks. Do you want us to raise taxes by five mils to hire you more deputies?
The only one that you're gonna be hiring is just two. It goes toward my budget.
Five hundred thousand increase on your budget request?
I'm only requesting two more, and that's the detectives that was hired on the, that came on in regards to the budget.
My question was, do you wanna raise five mils to increase your budget, five hundred thousand dollars?
If I'm gonna provide professional safety, so when somebody picks up the phone and they need help and they don't have to wait for an hour or two for somebody to respond, yes, I will. Because I worked in an environment not too long ago, when somebody would call, hold on a second. It's gonna be about an hour or two before I can locate a deputy to respond. Or is there a deputy working tonight? No, you gotta wait till eight o'clock in the morning. I'm not going down that road again.
I understand.
I'm not going down that road. So with, with the type of calls that law enforcement has faced today, especially with traffic, domestic calls. I don't expect a deputy to walk up to the door on a domestic call, not knowing what's going on inside that door. And he knocks on that door and a gunshot comes through there and he's the only one there. I really don't wanna make that notification. And I really don't wanna make that notification if that deputy knows that that vehicle that he's getting ready to stop has a crap ton of dope in there and known with guns. And he's out here on the highway somewhere, he better be calling for some backup.
The gentleman I have with you is a detective, and I know you have another one. Is those new positions or did you just feel had some detectives leave you or are these something you add?
Do you want to go creative for that grant?
Okay. But the grant's gonna expire, so we gotta pick up their salary, so.
Yes, and we had discussed this before with Susan, that the one position that, that is not currently filled right now with position is.
Making up the October to December.
October and December.
Yes.
And come to find out, hopefully, if everything's going right, there'll be a little bit of extra money that we can't spend. But we can use that spend, that money to spend and help assisting them with some more time so that they can possibly do additional work to solve more problems. So I'm working with the state with that right now. It kinda is showing that there could possibly be money, additional monies left over. And that's one thing that you don't wanna do is turn money back in. They want you to spend it and they want you to spend it all.
Now, regarding the SRO position. Let me make it very clear. I believe in SRO position. I think they're needed in our school system. But I'm gonna echo what you told me six months ago, that we have no money for SRO for two thirty-four or I'm gonna add two thirty-five. So I'm recommending the cities and the school system work together to provide that position. And I think that can happen. I think both school districts have the money. I think the city that's involved has the money because it, maybe, we just can't do it all, Bill.
Okay, now, now say that question again. I, supposedly I had said what?
You said right there, and, and when I was asking for an SRO position for U two thirty-four. You said we didn't have any new money or none of the money we could use for that. And county council may even question the liability and legality of us providing money to the city or anyone else providing a SRO.
I don't think I remember saying that. I said, in regards to the money itself, I believe that the statement was, why are we giving the county money? Why is the county giving county money to the city entity? When we have deputies that haven't gotten pay raises in their two or three years or use that money to offset the school resource officer?
So you're saying there's a difference in two thirty-four and two thirty-five?
I'm not saying the difference.
You just said it, Bill. You just said there was a difference. So, okay, I don't have any other questions, so.
So. I'm gonna say this again, it's your budget. And you don't care which one, I mean, at the end of the day, we have to approve or not approve, I guess. One, two, or three?
He just gave it six percent, so.
I just gave it six point three percent, so we're getting closer to it.
Yeah, we're getting close to one of them already.
Right here.
I, I understand that. Of, of new money, I mean, who's paying that bill?
It's money that's already in the budget.
You got it? You already have it? Perfect, perfect. I have no problem with it.
So really, no, the three percent will get you about nine percent.
Is that from the savings of not having a deputy for so long? Cause it's about.
Cause we, I think I spent, I think I had thirty-two percent that I'd spent or remaining thirty-eight.
Yeah, you've got fifty, here, I'm gonna hand this out. This'll be where you're at today.
And, and I'm, and I'm asking these honestly because, I mean. If we have to raise the mill levy, you're making me go back on the word I gave everybody, so.
And then you're also making me go back on the word that I'm gonna provide you with a service that I'm gonna be there for you.
Far right hem column. It shows you the budget, year-to-date revenue, and then below that is year-to-date expenses. And then budget remaining. And as of today, I checked this again today, there's fifty-five percent remaining in his wages. So there's about an extra five percent there to play with. But where I'm concerned, Bill, is in your contractual and commodities and supplies. You've only got ten or eleven percent left there in commodities or contractual services and eight percent left in commodities and supplies for your, for this year. So that, that's, I'm concerned there.
So, but what about the money, I mean, now Bobby's left, but what about the, I mean, where's the money coming that's paying these out-of-county?
Well, that's another concern. However, if you look down at his budget. And I can't explain this, but there's only been four thousand dollars spent in the corrections center for commodities. But then we're up in contractual. So probably ought to go back and, and look at the, the detail. I'll send you a report tomorrow to see if things are being coded appropriately, but I am concerned that you're where you are today.
Well, I mean, if we.
You should be at fifty percent and we're at forty-three percent.
If we're at twenty-five out-of-county? Is that right?
We have twenty-five today?
Yeah.
Out-of-county?
Yes.
Speaker on, Susan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That are staying in our jails?
No, staying in somebody else's jail.
No.
So where's that money coming from? That's a thousand bucks a day. That's. And, and, and I guess my concern is we, we look, I mean, I look at some of these numbers and, and it's not. They're, they're not addressing the issues that you've came and came to us before and yelled at us about. Not yelled, I mean, I don't know what else to term.
I just have one question. Sorry for interrupting you.
You're fine.
Sheriff's detective expires in twenty twenty-two. Do you have that down as one or two people?
You've got one up above. It's sheriff deputy.
Okay, so.
So there's two, there's two that retired in twenty-two.
That buys just one.
Yeah, yeah. It's just how they pulled across in on my report.
I don't have any more questions right now. I just, I just, I mean, we're not addressing, I, I don't think with the corrections budget and with yours here, we're not addressing the issue that you've came and addressed this commission in the past. I guess that concerns me. I mean, it's.
Any other questions? I have a question then.
Okay.
And this is just a discussion. This is just, just an input. You told me the people that are sitting there behind me what regards to a five percent increase.
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, and I'll address the public themselves. Would you be happy with a reduction of force if you happened to call law enforcement in the middle of the night and be advised or told? They're, sorry, we don't have a deputy working right now. The next one comes on.
We're not, we're not asking you to, no, we're not asking you to reduce, don't make, that's not, that's not a fair question.
I'm just asking for input.
Not a fair question at all, okay? We're not, we're not asking you to reduce your force. We're not asking you to reduce your force.
But to, but I'm just saying though, you're kinda pressuring me going, now wait a minute here, there's a lot, you're increasing by five, so.
Five mils, actually, it's a thirty percent increase.
So that we can stay neutral.
You're talking about a twenty-five percent increase in your budget.
Okay.
But it's not, we're not asking you to reduce your force.
Okay, well, I'm just, now I'll just make this as a general question then. I wouldn't even ask the people behind me, but it's something to take.
If we did that, we would reduce your budget by fifty percent to take you back to a, you know, no deputies at night.
And maybe that's the question that needs to be asked then.
There, in my opinion, that is a more fairer question.
Okay, and I'll just leave that for the public. You want, when you pick up the phone, you want somebody there at your door?
You can ask them.
You want people to take the drugs off your street. We've already discussed that.
That one that wants to answer. Ann?
We moved here in two thousand nineteen to the city, just south of the city. It didn't take two hours for a deputy to show up. I was shocked. I was prepared. It wasn't anything major. It wasn't, you know, so I was prepared to wait. And I'm gonna say less than an hour, he showed up. So now that may not be the case for everybody.
Correct, it's not the case, but you have the one incident where he was available and close. But there's times that, you know, like I said, there's one, that deputy can be in Mapleton responding. He can be somewhere else, but having two kinda covers the, covers the county more than one. And, and I'm glad that they responded quickly to you. I don't know how fast they got to you in driver's speed, but I'm glad that they got to you.
But do you have three deputies on duty every evening?
No.
Two.
Two, okay.
So I don't, I mean, I don't want anybody to be confused. I'm not asking you to reduce your deputies. I mean.
But you're trying to say find ways, and I kinda feel like, oh, wait a minute here.
No, not find ways. I mean, I just, I mean. I mean, try, I mean, I guess as a taxpayer, let me do this, not as a commissioner, but as a taxpayer. It appears to me that you don't care about it. You just will spend money and more money. How many, how much is, when's enough enough? I mean, as a taxpayer, I mean.
But you have to understand also expenses have also gone up with law enforcement, you know? Records management, when we first started out, was eighteen thousand dollars. Now it's gone up to twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars, then it's probably will increase again. All the other commodities and stuff that goes up, anything in your household has increased. You know, I just saw a thing in propane services that are gonna go up another twenty percent or something like that. But, you know, I still have to provide a service that's safety, that people are going to get what they want.
Okay, so, so my question is, can you not provide that with the same vehicles you have today? You need three hundred thousand dollars more?
No, cause they're falling apart. Matter of fact, I have two that are sitting down right now. And what that creates is then that deputy then goes into that vehicle and then that vehicle's operating twenty-four hours a day, covering more mileage of a six hundred and forty-two square miles instead of people comparing it to the city where they only travel five miles, square miles. Okay, so there's more coverage in the county. I mean, we can go apples and oranges, pears, whatever, but. Lost my train of thought, but anyways.
You wanna hear something funny, Bill? And I think you'll think this funny. Five years ago, you abandoned an old pickup truck and it was shot. And Public Works been using it for five years on a mowing truck, so there is always a use for something out there.
So is this the one that used to belong to emergency manager or the?
I don't know. It was, it's set right out here for a long, long time.
With the step rusting out of it.
Pretty crippled up, yeah.
So, so at the end of the day. You're, you're, are you wanting six vehicles this year?
Two, like I said, it was a mistaken understanding in regards to the vehicles from last year.
So, so we're not even, so, so personally, I'm arguing about something that I probably shouldn't be because it doesn't matter. Cause this number's not right. Is that correct?
Yes, that number is incorrect because when we explained this, in the capital outlay, when you look at it, it was zero. It was moved over to the sales tax and being paid for that way. To me, and I'll take the hit, and I said this last time. I assumed, and I take responsibility, that that was taken out and wasn't approved. But then I was told last week that it was in the sales tax part of it to go ahead and buy the vehicles.
But I, but I think what can, what can help with that is we'll make a transfer from the sales tax fund to your budget. And so then it's always showing in his budget. That, that would make it a lot more clear.
Cause I see that every, I see that every month, every whatever.
So there's a couple.
So I'm not actually flipping pages trying to find that.
There's a couple mils I don't have to worry about.
Cause there's two that be ordered today and approved with two more vehicles for next year. We should be good to go.
So your basic request are two more deputies. That's your basic request for a budget increase.
That will cover for the drug detectives that was awarded on the grant for this year, yes.
Can you say that again?
Wait, it's three.
Yes.
It's the SRO and the two detectives.
Well, but we don't even, that's not, I mean.
SRO to me is not even in question.
It, it, we can't legally, I mean, it's, we've already said we can't do it for U two thirty-four. How can we do that for U two thirty?
Question, question legality of us doing that, so.
I don't understand. I mean, not, I mean, trust me, my wife's a school teacher. I wanna, I wanna sheriff deputy or a cop in every school, every school in the country, in my opinion. Needs one. So, but, but I can't, I, if, in all my faults, I'm gonna try to be as fair as I can up here. And I'm not gonna pay money for one in another school district if I don't do the same in the, in the other one, plain and simple.
And I, and I agree with you. And during the meetings in regards to school resource officer, I have said the same thing. I believe that there should be a school resource officer in every school. But we're gonna go right back to data and stuff. And you're, and we've discussed this numerous times, show us data, show us the data. I'm, you know, I believe in, like I said, I will, I agree with the school resource officer in every school. But that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, probably.
I agree.
So the other incre, so for the two officers, it's about one mil. But then there was other increase in your contractual, and I assume that's for, I don't have his budget right in front of me. I assume that's for fuel.
But that's been addressed already today, so we'll just go ahead and move forward.
Is that what the, is that what it was for, was for fuel? It's like a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars if there's an increase.
No, that's not it.
No, that's not fuel.
In regards to, there was telephone service, which I believe that Mr. Ward was going to address that because of that. Copy machines, three thousand, import, inmate transportation outstate was fifteen thousand dollars. Computer hardware was five thousand, records management is twenty-three thousand dollars. That was the current increase. Vehicle payments, that's paying for three vehicles at two thousand six hundred and fifty-two. Membership for deputies, in-service mandatory training, that's fifteen thousand. In-service training has gone up financially for deputies to go. In regards to a comment that was made last week, yes, we all go to the same training academy at K L E T C in Hutch. But once you finish the academy at K L E T C, what additional training or specialized training you, you go to? That is based on the administration of that.
Can that be used with forfeiture funds?
There are some that can be, yes.
Okay.
So, so my question, your deputies aren't gonna like me to say this, but if we pay for their, their training. Can we make them stay for six months?
You can't.
I mean, you can't, you, I mean, you, it could be given a, I mean, yeah, you can. They do it in healthcare all the time. I mean, if I take a bonus or something, I have to stay or I have to pay the money back.
Yeah, you can make some policies.
Should we keep them, Bill? We pay for the training for a while?
That'll be a slippery slope, but to answer your question.
There are statutes for fire. I, I think it's fire. I don't think it's police.
And maybe it's not that much money, but it sounds like it's quite a bit.
That requires you to pay it back.
Okay, and that's where I was going before.
Okay, sorry. Tell me.
There is a statute in regards to law enforcement training. When an officer goes to the academy, okay, that agency's paying for that schooling, paying for the salary and everything. Once that officer graduates, that officer has to stay within that agency with three hundred and sixty-five days before he can move on to another law enforcement agency, okay? So usually about three hundred and sixty-seven days, three hundred and whatever days, when they've gone out and networked and realize, hey, I can make more money wherever. They're gonna start applying for jobs. Now, if they happen to go to another agency within that three hundred and sixty-five days, then that agency that he goes to.
Has to reimburse you.
There you go. There you go. So that works. And can, continue on membership and service training. We already discussed that. Operation of the mobile data terminals, Shane addressed that in regards to the cell phone. Liability Risk Management Institute, two hundred dollars. That's what gives us our policies in place. The web domain and the legal attorney assist is your new one.
So the difference in all that was a hundred and fifteen?
No, I don't know, but that was a hundred and thirty unless I had it up.
Hundred and thirty-six, but it's not gonna be that, but that. I'd say it's probably about the same as last year after you deal away with some of that.
There was a, there was an increase, an, an increase in the overall budget minus the, the three, and maybe, maybe I misread it.
Well, you said some of it's for fuel, so we're gonna change that.
Fuel was your biggest hit. The fuel is the biggest hit in regards to ammo was another like a two thousand, three thousand dollar increase. Cause ammo has gone up.
I was just looking at bottom line is what I was looking at, Bill.
Mail service, a lot of subpoenas going out. We have to mail them out or forfeiture notices going out that have to be mailed to. And vehicle maintenance was the other increase of fifteen thousand. Like I said, I already replaced two engines at six thousand dollars each.
So, just, just a thought. And it, it's not, it's probably not much, but everything counts, in my opinion, I guess. Oil changes and stuff like that, are they done? Where, I guess? Done at like Briggs or they?
That is left up to the individual deputies. Once again, live local, buy, support your local businesses. Since the local businesses support us in certain things that we do.
Okay.
So we try to visit them as much as possible. Like I said, since they support us on certain things that we, that we go and act and ask money for, for certain events and stuff taking place. I like to keep that working relationship going so they know, hey, you, you trade with us, we're gonna sponsor and help you with something that you do.
Well, I've only got one more comment, Bill, and I'll answer any question you have, of course. As a commissioner, I will not raise the mill levy. If we have to go up a couple mils to provide you deputies, we're gonna trim it from Public Works and the treasurer and the clerk. My one vote. There's only two here, so it could be a Mexican standoff. If it's, it's fine. But that's why, but I will not raise the mill levy on the Bourbon County taxpayers.
And I, and I respect that, and I don't wanna see taxes raised. I'm a taxpayer too.
Yeah.
I mean, I, my wife showed us our property tax and she's like, this is, this is it.
That's serious.
But I'm also, like I said, I'm also, but as a law enforcement officer, I also have the service to provide safety to the community. And we discussed it in detail. We could even go further into detail.
I know. I mean, personally, I, I would not question your, your work as a sheriff nor his or your deputies. I think you guys have done awesome. I mean, absolutely not questioning your, your guys' ability.
I appreciate that.
We have to, we, we, you know, no different than what that Lincoln and Nylander, I mean, we ultimately work for the taxpayer.
And we all do.
And.
And that's where the push and shove of politics comes.
I know, and I think this year, for sure, you know, I mean, you're seeing that nine point one percent inflation, which the true number is above twenty. The one that came out last week, we're in a recession at this point and people are struggling. So any increase is tough, I think. You know, and if we can, if we can keep it the same, I think we should.
Well, I wish I would've been able to provide this information. I can, and the reason why I won't right now is because. This is a kind of a process in regards to the work that the drug detectives have done from January to June. But just kinda give you an idea of how much that the deputies out there work, make the traffic stop, do the. Oh, what do I wanna say? The networking with people trying to gain information, intelligence of what's going on. And if I'm reading this right, and it'd be Davidson's. Just in June alone, eight point five pounds of meth was seized in Bourbon County. One point seven ounces of marijuana, thirteen drug dosy juices of pills, thirty-one paraphernalia, over a hundred and sixty-nine dollars in cash. Vehicles, we've seen six and we had about fourteen arrests that's in drug related. But what really kinda sticks out is that eight point five pounds of meth working, does those drug detectives?
I don't know nothing about meth. Is that a lot? Really, I don't know.
A lot?
That's a lot.
Okay, now that's.
Really, I don't know, so.
So, you know, that's what your deputies are doing out there when they are gathering intelligence, driving around circling like vultures or whatever, trying to look for that, that stop. This is what they're doing. And along with that, with burglaries and thefts and everything else, is all related to all this, one way or another, so.
If you have those two positions, what do you see changed next year that you might need more positions?
No, I wouldn't.
Just another question.
No, because at that time, and they have the understanding that, yeah, they'll be focusing on drugs. But if there's a shift coverage that somebody needs vacation or calls in sick or goes on vacation or ups and leaves and we need shift coverage, they're aware that they're gonna step into those positions on top of that.
Can your detectives do that today also, if they need to?
No, cause the grant basically focuses on.
Okay, we're still under the grant. Okay, I got you.
But once they get that, once that grant expires, then you probably will see a good significant decrease in overtime. And also with the other positions that'll actually be filled, you'll see a decrease. Cause like I said, when you have one person leave the shift, somebody on days off is coming in to work twelve hours and you're gonna create that overtime.
When does that grant expire?
October, I think.
This year?
Yes.
So they're actually in the twenty twenty-three budget?
Yes.
Take over their payroll?
Correct.
Plus two more, okay.
Two more.
No, they're the two.
That's the two.
That's the two, and then the school resource officer, and then the one position that wasn't filled this year. That was budgeted, but we didn't fill that position to carry the.
Okay.
So just to make it clear, there's only two positions. That's the drugs.
Yeah.
For the grant, the school resource officer grant that retires in twenty twenty-three. And then the one position that never was built, that's actually carrying the drug detectives at the, for the end of the year.
When does the S R officer grant expire?
Twenty-three in June. July first will be the last day. We will, we will not be able to withdraw any money after July.
Of next year?
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Next year.
End of the school year, next year.
End of the.
June.
Is it federal fiscal year?
Yes.
So they're on a July?
July first is when it runs out.
So why, why is that in the budget? That shouldn't be in the twenty-three budget then?
Well, you're gonna be carrying, you're gonna be picking up that school resource officer's position. You're.
Part of it.
Yeah, you're, you're six months of it. And then twenty twenty-four, then you'll have to look at it again.
Well, I think I made it clear. I'm not.
Yeah, Bill, it's, you've got me supporting your deputies. I mean, you've got me there, but again, we're not supporting. I support SRO. Financially, we can't do it because we're not helping two thirty-four and we're not helping two thirty-five. Financially, we can't do it, because we're not helping two thirty-four, and we're not helping two thirty-five. And our county councillor has even mentioned the legality of it, there's some questions there, so. When that expires, in my opinion, the city of Fort Scott, and U two thirty-four, and the city of Uniontown, and U two thirty-five is gonna have to step forward and take over that. And I think they're capable of doing that.
Yeah, and then during the meeting, and during the SRO meeting and stuff that we've had, I've expressed my, not concerns, but the positions, who should be responsible for it? Correct?
I won't get into that.
So, but, uh, but that's at a later con- you know, later conversation, if that dialogue ever starts up again, I will say the same thing, one, two, and three, this is why I feel is responsible for, or how it should be focused.
Since we're, we're, I think it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, um, on the SRO, is it possible that U two thirty-five could participate this fiscal year, since they're doing their budget right now too? Have we gone and asked them that?
We have, uh, we have asked them about the, we told them about that, we provided them with the information in regards to the benefits. It's just a matter of following up, saying where they need to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill, for your time. Any questions in the audience, to Bill?
Do we have any benchmarks or measurements that you track sheriff of, of response time? Or something that we could measure as to why we should add more deputies later, if response time increases?
That's a, that's an excellent question, and that is something, let me go this way. And Deputy Davidson can, mind your way.
No, you're fine.
Deputy Davidson can attest to the screaming and yelling that I do in, in the staff meeting, and I'm not actually screaming or yelling. We're having a discussion, and, uh, a lot of the calls that come in through dispatch, people just wanted that deputy to call them. They don't want us to respond. So what they do while they're out driving around, they will look at the CAT system, mobile data terminals in the car, and call the number. And so what happens, their dispatch, when they arrive, is the same time, because they're calling them. So it blows that lot, so that outlier goes all the way out. Now, and here's kind of the double edged sword. And I've said this before, to me, we need to have face-to-face conversations with the people that we serve. So if somebody calls and says, hey, we have this, and that deputy, he said, I will respond, so then that creates the response time. Now, I can look at it this way. Look at the gas prices. So, you know, you're kind of, you know, which way, because they, the deputy can be sitting at the office, typing out a report, and a call could come in, a subject would want, wants to talk to a deputy about X, Y, and Z. While the deputy's there, he'll pick up the phone, and he'll take care of that call, not even leave the office. To me, I'm old school, I think they need to stop and go to that call. And I think it was you, Mr. Walker, if I believe, that you had an incident back in January, and I'm not putting you on the spot, in regards to an incident that happened, and you called the sheriff's department on, in regards to a piece of equipment?
They got six cavity converters stolen, there was no reason for him to come out, you're like, you're not gonna solve it, who you added, so. And I called, but as a citizen, I called to let him know this was going on in the county. Uh, the county over the sheriff's department actually put in the newspaper that this was going on, and it dropped a newspaper, and they did the same thing. I didn't realize it was that severe, not only did I get some stolen, but there was a truck parked next to me, and it got stolen too. And we, we broke that off.
Yeah, but the point that I'm making though is that the deputy called you.
He didn't call, I called him, and that was the end of it.
That's what I'm saying, you called, he never came out and talked to you. And that's the point that I'm trying to make, is that, that eliminates that response time. So you're not really gonna get a true, true accurate response time of all the calls. And, and thank you for bringing that up during the commission meeting, because I went back and looked up your report, and how it's classified, we had another discussion with the staff to make sure that they're classified properly. And that's the information that I need, so that I can go back and talk to the deputies, to make sure this is what needs to be taking place. So, but thank you for sharing that information, that, that he actually called or you talked to him. Did that answer your question, Mr. Walker?
No, really.
Okay.
I'm saying, give us some ammunition, establish a benchmark. You know, you can't justify not, I can tell my daughter, you can't go to the mall because gas prices are too high. You can't tell me you can't come to my house if there's an emergency, because gas prices are too high. So establish a benchmark, or some goals, or measurements that you can put in place, where you can justify that to the officials.
So I said, when it comes to response time and stuff, you're gonna have different points all over the place.
It's, it's, they come up with some under benchmark.
You're not gonna come up with.
I'm not gonna run the sheriff's department.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I thank you for your information, and yes, we do track the response time. And a lot of that, and I'm not, you know, by no means I'm not throwing dispatch underneath the bus. There are young, there are very young group of people that are learning right now, they have a very high turnover rate, and I deeply respect that, that group of, uh, people that are in there trying to do it. Sometimes we have, I have to call and say, hey, here's the receive time, now it's sitting, but I don't have no time here. Here's a dispatch time, nothing there, now I have a, arrived time, that's actually filled in, but there's nothing in between. So that's, I don't get that all the information.
The only benchmark it seems like that we've used in the budget is the overtime hours. And that overtime hours fluctuates based on your number of heads on board.
Right.
So, give us some more am- ammunition to help you, where we can measure why you need more people.
Once he comes up an appointment with me, and we'll sit down and we'll discuss that.
I could, I could do time and motion studies, manufacturing, but I can't do that with the sheriff's office.
And one of the things that was said today was that you have seven thousand calls, seven thousand somewhat calls. And I started to think about a way to maybe help with these benchmarks, and I wondered in your software, if someone calls in, Bill, can it not be automatically logged in as a one? Every one means that, um, that it was a, it was a, it was a police officer needing assistance in town. And so that you could actually go back and say, oh my gosh, we had forty-five ones as a, or maybe you had six thousand ones, so that you can then come to the city commission and say, okay, this, these are the number of actual calls we made out in the county for domestic violence, so that we had this many, I would think there'd be a software program, or even your first thing you're.
We already have that.
We already have that, right here.
Oh, so you know, okay, so you're mine, you're mine, why is that?
Well, it's different than what I.
Which is. Okay.
So we have tax records, it's nine one one, he'll bring out all the calls that we have, nine one one, how many calls there were, and then it's how it's going to look to that nine one one call. How many burglaries did that?
Okay, so you have, so you know.
It's broken down by categories.
I didn't, I didn't hear you say that, because they were asking you, how do we justify?
Yeah, that, yeah, they're broken down by categories. Yeah, they're, they're broken down by categories, but based on, like, Mr. Walker's theft, it's a theft or a call-in, but there's no, uh.
Can I see it? Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
I don't know, we got that, Bill.
All right, Shane, Shane put this together. Shane, can you explain some of this, please?
Oh, the CAT?
Yeah. What all it means here.
Well, there's seventy-eight hundred calls.
Yeah.
That's true. But those calls aren't all calls for crimes or traffic, there's, there's a lot of calls that are driven around in there.
Um, anybody can go in and ask dispatch for that list of calls, and it lists PD, sheriff, they can pull them however.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's no dispute, there's seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty calls for service, but there's three hundred and sixty-five calls that they're eating dinner. I mean, that's a call for service, that's when they call dispatch, they log it. So, you would have to spend weeks going through all this, to kind of even figure out what it is. I mean, it breaks it down by traffic and stuff.
So they're taking a meal break, it logs as a call.
Yeah, anytime they call dispatch and say, I'm going to Hen Valley Lake, that's a call. Or if somebody calls and says, I need an officer to come to my house, that's a call.
Okay.
I wanna seeking advice, that means somebody's wanting to ask a deputy a question, that's a call. So, I'd have to figure out how to break that all down.
And that's what I explained last week, is that when I presented the calls for service, when somebody picks up the phone and calls dispatch, then that, they log in. Now, here's, here's another dark figure crime, and I just thought of this. Why, when people come into the sheriff's department, uh, seeking information and stuff, majority of the time, or they wanna speak to me or another deputy, majority of the time, they're not calling dispatch to say, hey, there's somebody at the office. Just like a VIN inspection. Yeah, Deputy Davidson does a VIN inspection for somebody, he doesn't call dispatch and say, I'm doing a VIN inspection at the office. So there are a lot of calls that go unreported through this report, because they go directly to the sheriff's department, because it's open. And the same thing goes with me, they'll, don't want any deputy. They'll come in and say, I need to talk to a deputy about this. They'll go in, if the deputy feels that there's a report that's needed, they're gonna call dispatch, if not, then they just walk away. So that just goes back to the calls for service, you're, once again, we're not getting a true picture. Now, have I said this before, call dispatch, when you're gonna deal with somebody at the sheriff's office, so we can have the numbers and the data? Yes, I have, numerous times, correct? And sometimes it kind of, we get busy, and we don't do that. So I try to get as much, I try to school the deputies as much to show how important it is to get as much information as we can possibly get, to justify what they are doing, and why we are asking for what we're asking for, so.
I, I've personally called undersheriff Cole, and I'm.
As a matter of fact, he called us.
And the problem take, I mean, and the problem got taken care of, I've called him more than once.
Right, and I can probably, will guarantee, he never called dispatch and got it.
It was crim- and it was crime-related, so, I mean, I can attest to what he said.
So, but we, like I said, we try to do as best as we possibly can with reports that we get, the classification of the reports, the call for service, when they come directly to the sheriff's office from Mondays to Fridays, they operate open offices. But it's just up to that deputy to say, hey, I'm out at the office with such and such a call. But then again, it goes back to the response time. If they walk in, with their dispatch, they received it, their dispatch, they arrive, and they're cleared, all within one minute. Or, not one minute, but dispatch, receive, dispatch arrive, thirty minutes later, they're cleared. So you have those three calls there, that's kind of throws everything in.
But it can still be a benchmark, because you're gonna have a certain percentage of, or one minute, a certain percentage of, and there're gonna be twenty minutes.
And it even, and it even sits there as long as it sits in queue before he even gets dispatched.
I think Mrs. LaRoche had another question.
Well, I have, I, I have a concern on a, kind of a different thing, but a way to maybe make money for your department. And I so appreciate the gas thing that you brought up, Jim, that's gonna obviously save a lot of money. Okay, my concern, a couple of questions here. We right now, I called the sheriff's department today, and we have sent twenty-seven prisoners somewhere else as of today. What are we spending per day to send that, each prisoner to another jail?
Right now, you're looking at it here from forty-five to forty-five dollars a day.
Forty-five dollars a day, tonight?
Thirty-five to forty-five dollars.
So, about a thousand dollars, I'm just in my head, about a thousand dollars a day, so thirty thousand dollars a month with these numbers, right? That we're sending somebody up. But when the jail was first built, we were supposed to be able to bring other people here and make a whole lot of money, right? Okay, is it too late? If you get your added help, like thirty thousand, if you paid your employees six thousand a month, which I'd probably, you know, apply if you did that. But if you. Oh, no, you don't. Six thousand dollars a month, you would hire five new guards for that money that we're spending to, I'm, I'm sure I'm not saying anything you haven't heard, Bill. So why are we not trying to in, either increase the pod space and hire a ton more people? Because we didn't save all this money that, and then we'd be bringing a lot more money in.
We can't, we can't get anybody to apply with the space that we have now.
But if you paid them a lot, if you paid somebody five thousand dollars a month, you're gonna get people to apply.
But Patty, even with the, um, the last few years, we've not brought in a lot of revenue off of the, because a lot of it, it hasn't been out of county inmates. Um, we started, we had one year where we, we spiked, and it was like seventy-seven thousand dollars, I'd have to look at the numbers. And then we dropped back down to fifty, and then the year, the next year was like fifteen, and then the next year it was even lower. So we're going down instead of, and then Lynn County has now just built, um, facilities, and they're the only ones that were really using us consistently.
Really?
And so, now, they now have their, and so we really have, I, I feel like we're gonna be losing revenue come next year, am I correct?
Our jail is full of Bourbon County residents.
Yes.
So where's, where's the feasibility study that was done before the jail was built?
It's here on file, if not, I have a copy of it, I'll have to look for it. The jail is a seventy-two bed facility, and the rule is eighty-five percent rule. You wanna fill your jail to eighty-five percent of its capacity, it's seventy-two percent, which is about sixty-two, sixty-three percent, or sixty-three mixed. The rest you leave open, just in case if you have a mass increase in arrest and stuff like that.
Okay.
I'm not, don't wanna beat a dead dog, don't wanna beat a dead dog over this, but there has been several discussions in regards to you don't have enough bed space. We, there is eleven hundred square feet there in, there in the jail, that hasn't had no pods in it whatsoever, nothing. It's just, it's fully temporary storage. We went to the commission at that time, requested that sixteen beds be added.
Okay.
Because we were in the process of working with the Department of Corrections in the state of Kansas, of housing inmates. They were not gonna sign a contract until they were completely built, that they can come in and look at it, and making sure that our policies were in place, and also make sure that, uh, the Rape Elimination Act, I think, I can't think what the acronym of it is, was actually in place. It's a national thing for state housing.
And that could have made you.
That we could, yes, and right now, when the state of Kansas closed, they're in the process of building a new facility in Leavenworth-Lansing, the new state prison, they were shipping their inmates, our inmates, to Arizona, I had an old contract. And they were paying close to ninety dollars to ship inmates to, to Arizona. And to this day, I wish I would have fought a little bit harder, I wish I would have screamed a little bit more, and went and did those additional six pods, because, like I said, we were meeting with DOC about every other month, they were coming down. Female name, and I can't, since they're not here, I can't identify them, but there's two people that we were working with, and they were down here and said, as soon as you get this open, we'll get it done. Well, within the first six months, we filled it up with our own people.
So it would do us no good right now to add those pods, if like, if, if, if private entities or individuals said, I'd be willing to invest in this to make this happen, if it could, you know, and they obviously get the money back, but if it can help the county, help your budget, help bring in some money.
We'll have to go back, look at the, uh, studies that was done by the Kansas sentencing commission. They have the ups and downs of the rest rates and sentencing there. We were doing pretty good. To answer your question, to add those pods, we would have to consider the inmates that are in there right now, if they were in there. How is that gonna affect the atmosphere or the environment of the inmates? If there's welding, how's ventilation, how are we going to do all that? So that the inmate doesn't file a complaint because of certain things going on. Inmates are notorious for filing complaints. And we'd be chasing complaints all the time.
I wish that we just need to be so, we just need to be forward-thinking and try as I, as much as we can.
You know, and we, and that's the reason why we built the job, Jim, we were forward-thinking, saying, okay, we wanted, you know, I wanted at least ninety beds, and that was shot down, that was shot down. Matter of fact, there was a discussion at the very beginning, just to have forty-five beds. I mean, forty-five beds now, with the inmate population, as Susan said, you work from sixty-five to seventy, those twenty inmates would be shipped out somewhere else, and we'd still be paying for it and paying in another community.
But our county has to pay this money. Our county, complete county taxes, so, so that has to stop, I mean, that's just a whole foolish, uh, loss of money. And the, and the other question I would have is, I know today you said you, or last week, I'm sorry, you said you paid a nurse eighty thousand dollars. Are you for an eight-hour day?
That, that's, that number is, actually, it's forty.
Oh.
It's fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, I was gonna say.
So Bobby wrote the wrong number down.
Okay.
And he's not here to say that, but he, he actually.
Thank you.
Because we, me and Bobby's talked after that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyway, just some thoughts that we need to, we gotta do something to help your budget, because I want you to have the best of everything, and I want all your people to be the best paid. I, I do believe that's, that's really important, but I also don't know why taxes go up.
Bill. I have a question for you, Bill.
Do crossing state lines complicate your, your situation? Where, I understand Berry County just approved a new jail, but it isn't even, they haven't broken ground yet. So I would think there would be a, a need for them to house people.
No, we can't cross state lines.
Okay, so it's complicated.
Because that has to be within the state of Kansas. Because that has to be within the state of Kansas.
Bill, you have any way of forecasting, if you had those sixteen more beds, how much time would it be before it was filled up with Bourbon County prisoners? I mean, good guess, you know, I mean, your experience, one year, two year?
As aggressive.
Cause you can't control what the judge does.
No, I cannot, yeah, I cannot. But a lot of that, I will say this, my people are very aggressive, proactive. They don't let the grass grow underneath their tires, they're out there doing something. And they were probably would fill it up pretty quick. Because just what Davidson and Metcalf has done of working, it's gonna, they're gonna probably be a lot more.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Do we have a bond schedule in Bourbon County?
No.
Could you say that in it?
Now, Tiana, is she still here?
Do you have, have what?
A bond schedule? That's set by the judge.
We do not have a bond schedule. Our chief judge, uh, suspended it because it was unconstitutional.
But other counties, just to clarify, other counties in the state has, had, they do have a bond schedule.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. Now, that doesn't, the individuals still get bonds, but they're set by the judge. It used to be that if you arrested for this, no matter who you were, you had this bond. If you arrested for this crime, no matter who you were, you had this bond. Now it's set by each judge.
And what that, and then what the judge is, looks at that is financial discrimination. Because if you set a bond for X amount of dollars for this crime here, and somebody who works at McDonald's gets arrested, and somebody who is a person with a well-paying job, you know, in the six-digit, and somebody that's in the, I don't know, four, five thousand dollars. You know, uh, it's not fair according through the, through the eyes of some of the judgeships. So they've done away, so that everybody then has to go in front of the judge, and the judge then will make that determine as to what the bond is. Has that been a pain for us? It has. Has it been a pain for Tiana? It has, because now she has to follow the reports quicker and faster, instead of the affidavits that we used to send to the judge. And then the judge would send the bond, or they can bond out while they're there. While they're getting processed in, there's already a preset bond, they pay that money and they're out the door, we have empty space.
So.
There are, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
There, in my opinion, I think there are some cases where they could possibly not be arrested. They could just be given a citation. Of course, I know they don't do citations, but there's some cases like driving while suspended, as long as there's no drugs found in the car, something like that.
So, so, uh, and, and this has been asked by a couple of people in public, of me is why I'm bringing this up.
Take this down. I hope people can hear you, please. We're sitting on here.
So if somebody is arrested with a, uh, suspended license on Friday night, they're in our jail till Monday morning?
Correct.
Or they can get out of.
Our, our judge, it's our magistrate judge who sets the bonds. She's, um, very busy, but she's actually very, very good about getting it done pretty quickly.
Good, okay.
So it's possible they could even.
Like I said, it was asked in the public, so I.
It's not necessarily for the weekend, but they can get a PC affidavit sent to the judge that night, and she may sign it Saturday.
She'll, and she'll set a bond.
Well, it's not a three-day.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and that PC affidavit, I apologize for interrupting you, that PC affidavit is sent to the judge. The judge reads it, the judge could say, no bond, the person sits there, or the judge could say, X amount of dollars and you're out if you can pay that bond.
It would save space in the jail, though, in my opinion, because, and I'm not minimizing, it's still a crime, you need to have a driver's license to operate a vehicle on the streets of Kansas. But if, you know, if there's no other additional crime, like sometimes they will stop someone for driving while suspended, they'll find drugs.
Sure.
You know, that absolutely, I think they should be arrested. But if it's, if it's just no insurance, no registration, driving while suspended, it's just as easy for us to get that into long form and give them a summons date, and that saves space in the jail.
That's if they show up to court.
Well, then.
Patty, she has a question.
So is your budget including us paying for these, to send these prisoners other places? That's not even in the budget, right? So that's an additional amount of money that we're gonna have to come up with, which is a lot of money. Okay, so if you added the pods, sorry, it's the last thing I'm gonna say, if you added the pods and made it bigger, and, and I know what you're saying, they're gonna fill it up. But what if then you did get inmates from other places and, and you had enough money to buy, to pay for some more, for some more guards? Then if, if Bourbon County sends somebody to jail, but they're already taken, Patty, they can't send them away, right? They can't send them back to another county, because this is a Bourbon County person. They're not gonna replace that person who's been sent here from Iola or whatever, or.
Well, he would have his fifteen percent still open. He's always gonna run a fifteen percent.
So, so that should.
Eighty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Eighty-five percent occupancy.
A way that could work.
So, but the thing is, those pods are well over a million dollars, and you gotta have the money to buy, pay for those. I mean, am I wrong in those numbers? I remember.
When we went up to the commissions to.
Somebody telling me that.
When we went up to the commission, we, we proposed to the commission that.
Not this commission, let's make that clear.
Former commission, that the cost would be seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's while the building was still open, and you'd be able to keep pushing pods in, okay? A pod is just the squares, all it is. And you can push them in, weld them, secure them, and then they're done, plug and play. We went up about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'd have to look, that's an estimate, it's on record. When we went up and presented that, there was a former, uh, county representative, county commissioners at that time, and a private citizen who was totally against it. They felt that they needed to save money. The county official, not commissioner, but the county official and the citizen, with all due respect, I, I understand, with respect to his opinion, said no. The commissioner shouldn't do it, so they shot it down and said no. So when they said no, they closed it back up, and about three months later, just out of curiosity, what would it cost now? Since you closed everything up, what is it gonna cost now to put those pods in? You have to peel the walls back, or you're gonna build them inside the building. It was gonna be over a million dollars.
But you have to understand our frustration, because we voted for that bond, because we thought it was gonna be a moneymaker to take care of itself. So again, I think we were just kind of led down a path of, uh, untruth, um, a little deception in order.
And like I said, that goes back to, I wish that there was more, there were several meetings that were taking place, not within the public or the commission, but, and I don't wanna say private meetings, it was just, it was meetings between the contractor, or between the architects, the contractors, the commissioners, and, and the sheriff's office. Passionate out, trying to figure out what we actually need, and then come to the public and say that. And to this day, I've learned a lot. That should have been more of a public discussion. Because before, they were talking about just a forty-five, forty-five bed facility. That wasn't gonna work. So they agreed, and then I requested at least a ninety, ninety-two bit facility more, so we don't have that. But that was shot down because of whatever. Like I said, I wish I could have, I wish I could have argued that more.
Because of what, what Susan said earlier, maybe I'm, I'm, and I, I feel like we're beating the dead horse at this point, but there was a peak where money was coming in at some sort of rate, and it has done nothing but decrease in the last, what, how many years? So to, to continue to talk about adding more pods and what, we're just gonna magically come up with, with out-of-county people to put in there to pay for it, when the last how many ever years, there haven't been out-of-county people there to pay for it.
But they haven't had the room.
They haven't had room, because we've been interrupting our own. We can play devil's advocate here, you know, let's just say hypothetically, hypothetically. If the jail was still here, if the jail was still here, we were only able to house about forty to forty-five inmates. Now take, what would we have done with the other twenty to twenty-five inmates of the daily operation? What would we have done with that, those people? We'd be sending them to other jurisdiction, and we would be paying, me, you would be paying that jurisdiction that money. Just like the first night, and I will remember this. Commissioner Collins, who was a former sheriff of Cherokee County, came to the first public meeting when we started the discussion with this jail project. The first thing that came out of his mouth was, Bourbon County, thank you for your money. Because we were sending our inmates to Cherokee County. We were paying Cherokee County your tax dollars to house fifteen, twenty inmates, if not more. And when he said that, that got people's attention to build the jail. Because our jail wasn't big enough at that time. Kind of, kind of, kind of closed this out a little bit. Do I think that we didn't build it big enough? Yes. Have we outgrown this? There's a good possibility we have. But these guys with the Texans and the deputies that I have, along with, with the department, they're, they're making arrests, they're investigating, they're doing what they can.
Since, since I've been here, if you don't mind if I, I don't wanna interrupt or anything, which has been July two thousand twenty-one. How many inmates, isn't it like sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five? How many are there able? Total inmates, right now, if you had full staff, could, could you, could the jail?
Seventy.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Now, I don't, obviously, I don't work at the jail, but I do get the jail, uh, the report, because I have to keep an eye on who's being arrested, who's being released, and charging and all that stuff. It seems to me, based on looking at those every day that we get the jail reports, that there has been sixty to maybe sixty-five Bourbon County people in there. And so, and I think that, and I know Lynn County, you know, they're getting their own jails, so we will lose them. But I think that if we got up to staff, I think we would still have extra space to house inmates from other areas. And I, granted, it's probably not the, you know, large amount you could get, um, if we had the extra pods, but I still think even. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it, am I not making sense, cause I can?
None of it makes sense to me. We're, we're not, I mean, even before all of this, before we had few, too few deputies, it doesn't sound to me like we were, we were only housing people from Lynn County.
That's.
Where are these magically other people from other counties going to come from?
Well, if their jails get full, then they're going to start looking for other counties, just like our jail got full. So we had to look to other counties that had available, that weren't full. And so we had to look to other counties to try to find. So it's not going to be, it's not gonna be a constant.
I think the thing you're trying to say, Ian, it's not a revenue that we can depend on.
Right.
The last two, last two years.
Yeah, so that happened, I don't.
Last two years, not much revenue, last couple of years.
Yeah.
Cause they were pulled at Bourbon County.
So we passed the half percent sales tax, or the point four, was there a commitment to how many beds we have?
Commitment total.
I mean, we get, they asked for a half, a half percent, I'm just rounding up, half percent sales tax.
For a seventy-two.
For a seventy-two, and that's the way it was sold?
Yep.
So it's not a revenue we can count on, but that's how we got the jail bond passed.
Was the half percent sales tax.
And then, and telling people that we, this was gonna be a revenue.
And, and here's what, and a part of the survey was that, at the time, we would, our inmate population would be, our rest would increase three point five percent per year, based on that curve. When they came up with the seventy-two bit facility, doing the math, at inmates being at forty-five to fifty, in about five years, we're gonna have fifteen additional inmates. We already outgrew it. And I argued that and said, now wait a minute, you didn't build it big enough. Well, we're only going to do seventy-two bit facility at point four. That's the point that I'm saying. I'm not throwing anybody under the knees as a bust by no means. All I'm saying is I wish I would have screamed a little bit louder and said, look at this. This is where we're at. This is where we're at now, exactly what they said.
I, I just don't think we'll ever be at full. I, not based upon, so when we had COVID, judges were releasing people because, you know, we didn't want an outbreak at the jail. That lasted, you know, a decent amount of time. We were trying to keep the numbers up low. Our judges have been setting, in my experience, um, especially in light of the Judge Hart saying that the bond schedule was unconstitutional, they're wanting to, because there was a big study done, I can't recall off the top of my head who did it, but, you know, that we wanna make sure these, um, the defendants with charges still pending, who have not been convicted, that their rights are not violated. And so judges are giving fairly low bonds. So the people who tend to be in the jail are new arrestees, probation violators, and people who have very, very serious charges. I, and, and, so I just, I don't think that, I don't think we've been completely full at full capacity, at least since I've been here. And I don't foresee that being an issue, because I think the judges weren't mindful of setting bonds, and they're able to get out and bond out, which frees up that space.
But then the next question is, are they gonna show up for court, and they're not a warrant issue? So we, we, we go either way.
Yeah, I'll tell you, two appears are biggest arrests.
You can't keep them in jail to make sure they appear, and, and there's, there's not a lot of failure to appear.
We'll, we'll see what we can. But, you know, just in closing and stuff, if anybody wants to set up a town hall meeting, myself, undersheriff Cole, Bobby, a couple of deputies, Deputy Davidson and stuff, we'll be more happy to sit down and discuss this, even further detail. I don't wanna take up anybody's anymore time, if this was a sheriff. I apologize if I went down the road here, but.
Thank you, Bill.
It's all right.
All right, let's move along, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Marched on in here and interrupted, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, Justin Meeks, you're up.
Um, do you wanna take like a three-minute break?
Yes, please.
I've got, I have to go into executive session. I don't want to, but I have to.
You go to boys, right?
So, thank you.
No, I'm serious. No, I am too. If I would have known that, I would have asked. I'm serious. Uh, how much money did they have?
And, and. So what are, what kind of, what are they prompting off all that? Like, what, they sell?
It goes to the sheriff's.
They have a claim? Are they denying it?
No, it's somehow the contractor, as their exact numbers, but the interest is coming.
Always, it always happens that way.
So that should be deducted from their budget immediately? So if they cannot use that much money to hire someone, what can they use for, can they use it to buy equipment?
They can use it.
Then they can take their money and use that to.
They can't use it to buy vehicles, they can't use it to buy anything in such that they can use it for.
Okay, we're back in session.
I've got, uh, two things I need to go into executive session for. One is. One is, um, a legal matter, possible, I guess it's possible litigation. Um, I do need Susan involved in that, and then I kinda wanna combine two, so I'm gonna talk about, it's a personnel matter, that also has some legal implications, so I need Susan in there too for that. But, if we had two commissioners, Susan and myself, I'd probably need, um, I was gonna have it only five, but I need to go to ten. And I apologize to the gallery, but I, I have to go in.
So, we're doing consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Motion to go into executive session under KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen B two for consultation with attorney for a public body or agency, which would be de, we would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, be the two commissioners, Susan Bancroft-
And for poss- possible litigation and for employment matter.
For possible litigation.
And a point, and a, and a employment matter.
Um, be for ten minutes, we will return here at eight twenty-one.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to resume normal session, eight twenty-one.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
No. No action. Aye.
Justin? Justin?
Are you done?
Are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
You're done?
I'm just gonna shut these real quick.
Okay. Susan?
Yes. I'm actually gonna let Clifton talk about the CHC land exchange.
So, it is the, uh, the land that, I don't know how it happened, I wasn't here, but CHC ended up with it. It's approximately seven acres, seven point-
Seven point two.
Something like that. Um, it doesn't include the, uh, helipad and the west parking lot.
It does include.
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
Um, it include basically the seven point two acres west of the hospital and some of it south. That includes the helipad up to, uh, that pharmacy drive-thru thing.
I've been, I've been informed by, um, Commissioner, I'm supposed to wait till Daniel's supposed to contact me, and we're supposed to move forward on the agreement. Is that the case, or you want me to draw it up, or what do you want me to do?
Give us a second to talk about it.
Okay.
You're jumping the gun.
Sorry, I just said no. That's my job.
Um, well, well, actually, I mean, I've had, I've had the authority to move forward on it for six months, so I guess I don't know if we need to vote on it again or not, but-
I don't think we've ever voted on it, have we?
Uh, I was given the authority to write the check in open session, but-
I don't remember talking about the parking lot, but whatever.
Uh, well, it's all that seven point two acres, it's all included. It's just a continuous deal owned by CHC, and-
Okay.
We want that ground back, so that, as in, the property is a full, back to its original mercy property. It's been, and we've discussed this since we got the building back, so it shouldn't be anything new. The fact of the matter is, CHC has, uh, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that property of their own money. And they would like that back, I, in a certain way, and, uh, what they have agreed to do, or what they have presented, not agreed to do, what they have proposed, is that we forego their rent until December, and they would transfer the land back to us. So, it's my recommendation that we do that, because we need the land, we need that entire piece of property. To move forward with- where that's going, and in my opinion, the rent payment that we were getting, we will have to use the mercy money to subsidize that for the next, whatever, six months. Um, so, it is not an increase of our budget or anybody's budget, and it's not taxpayer dollars.
I agree, we need that property.
It is mercy money, but we need the mon, we need the property back to move forward with plans for that building.
Yeah. I'm second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Now, can I ask my question?
Now, you can ask your question.
So, obviously, we don't own the land, so who should do the, I mean, I can, I'll-
If you would reach out to CHC, or, uh, yeah, go ahead and reach out to CHC's attorney and, um, see what their process is and-
Okay. I will do that tomorrow, first thing.
And one of you can draw up the paperwork.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Financials.
Financials. Um, we have our monthly financials, June, um, we're in balance. Um, so, wanted to pass, I think I left them at each one of your, um, areas. Then we're also, uh, ready for our second quarter, and so, that is also there, so we'll just need the chairman. And, um, we were doing this as a partnership, Ashley looks it over, Patty looks it over, and then, um, the chairman. So, basically, every one of those groups is required to do some kind of a report to the Tribune. We've consolidated, put it all in one, so we have less publication costs, and so, um, that's one thing that we've, that's a change that we've made. So, that's ready to be published.
I would make a motion to allow Chairman, uh, Harris to sign the Bourbon County Quarterly Report that gets published apparently in the paper.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Statutorily, uh, the treasurer, Patty, is required to, um, ensure that we have enough securities pledged, uh, for the county, um, with all of our banking institutions. And so, she and I have been working together on that. Um, we've put together a spreadsheet that shows the cash balance at the end of the month, um, in each institution. Um, one of the things that, um, when I, I was doing some checking on the, um, banks, um, there was four accounts at the Sheriff's Department that we were unaware of, and so, we've added those to, um, this list. And if you'll look at City State Bank, and I've actually reached out to John Hill, um, about this, uh, there is definitely some violations going on there, um, and it would be not only our violation, but a banking violation. Now, what I'm, what, I asked him, the question that I asked him is, does FDIC cover those, was he covering those F, those accounts at the Sheriff's Office separately under a different FDIC? And I don't think you can do that. So, I think they, they run all under the auspice of the, of Bourbon County, and so, he's gonna get back with me tomorrow, so I will report back to you at the next meeting, um, of how we will fix that problem. So, as of, um, every other institution, we are okay, um, and we will start including this in our monthly, uh, financial report to you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I, oh, I have one other thing, um, and I'll get you a copy of this. We had talked about, um, last week during our budget session, um, what it would cost for, uh, mill increases, and I know you guys have both made very strong statements that we would not, um, increase the mill levy, but I went ahead and did, um, the impact to residential and a commercial property owner of what, the total requested, um, increase from all, all of our different departments is about almost nine mills. And so, I show what that would cost a person, um, for a hu, somebody that owns a hundred thousand dollar home, that would be a hundred dollar increase, um, every year. For a two hundred thousand dollar, it'd be two hundred dollars. But for commercial, that's where it starts to get very expensive, um, because they're taxed at a higher rate. That's about eleven hundred dollars if they would see an increase. And so, I, I showed three different, um, ways. I also showed the mandated, um, groups, uh, district court, um, district attorney, and our benefits, and that's about a three-mill increase. And then I also showed the law enforcement. So, I just wanted the individuals to know, I'll go ahead and post this on the website, to kinda see how it impacts you as the mill levy increases based on your, how big your home is.
Good.
So, that's all I have.
Shane Walker, Chief Information Officer.
Hi Shane.
So, this is that MOU and the agreement for the city, for the landfill land that we finally got done. So, you guys have already approved it, it just needs signed, you know, by you.
Has, I mean, has Eric read this?
Lawyers read it.
And what, what...
It's for that thirteen acres of land out there. It was the same thing they agreed upon.
Well, we didn't have a reduced price for that thirteen acres.
Yeah, they're getting a reduced landfill cost.
Right.
Same thing we agreed on months and months ago. Nothing's changed. We just never could get the thing back and forth between the city attorney and here, so...
There's nothing new in there?
No. No, it's the same one we started on months ago.
And did we ever figure out if the land's okay to take? I mean, we did, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We, uh...
What they're using it for.
There's nothing on the land. Is Eric still here?
No, we have Frankie Hunt.
They surveyed it.
Eric, is he still here?
I don't know.
Eric?
I, I mean, I, it's his name that is, is on everything, so he's the one that gets, gets his hand slapped by the state, not, not me or Jim, so...
Yeah, he was the one that went through the KDAH process.
Eric, we're talking about the landfill trade.
So, this is, uh, the agreement that apparently came back from the, the city attorney?
The thirteen acres.
Okay. What's the final agreement?
Any, anything contamination, we would, it really why we want, want this problem, I know we've talked about it, talked about it, but you've been out there.
I, I don't know of any contamination. Do you know of any that might?
You had several conversations with Frank, probably.
I've had a few conversations with him. I don't recall, right off the top of my head, what the, uh... Eric, read that. What might be there. And this is C and D only, correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna give it any break on solid waste.
Absolutely, we're, we're down to the penny on that.
That's a fine penny right there. Yeah, our discussion was just C and D only. And I think, did we agree to percentage, certain percentage of offer?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
That was, was fifty percent.
And you was changing for the ground.
Yep. And how are we going to show what property it's coming from contractor-wise? Do we have anything to add in?
It's been surveyed.
No, I'm talking, bringing in, when they bring their house, or bring the C and D in, do we know that it is coming from? Well, that's a good question.
I mean, it's gonna be on those condemnation lists.
Is it? Okay. I, I just...
You're wondering how we're going to monitor, is the city gonna be honest or not?
I, I just want everything in black and white to make it easy on our part, contractor-wise.
Justin, what do you think?
The only, the only agreement is with the city of Fort Scott, so it's their house that's being torn down, so it's on the condemnation. It won't be, there was a cop, I, I understand, I think, where this is coming from. So, we had the city manager come to the last meeting and was asking about a different, um, proposal than the one that's being presented to the commission this evening. I did call Mr. Farmer, we did talk about that additional proposal. I don't think, based off that conversation, they'll be coming to ask for any additional, um, gains outside of this agreement, because of the possibility of tracking and who does what, when and where. So, this is the, um, houses are on the condemnation list with the city of Fort Scott that are approved and bid out by the city, they'll be dumped with this process, it will not be the one that was mentioned last week, so...
So, it's gonna put an extra burden, in my opinion, on whoever's working at the landfill.
I, I think C and D's actually been doing really well.
It's doing really well. I guess my point is... No, 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 they're going to have to know if that house was on a con, I mean, you know, I mean...
They're gonna have to have some document or something.
We're gonna have to have communication and know that that C and D material is from that house, and...
I think, I think that's pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
The city could, the city could develop, we don't know what fourteen are gonna be next year, so they can have, let's see, ten, eleven Jetson, I, I don't, make it up an address, let's not tear it down. I don't wanna, please, any house on Jetson, whatever it is, okay, a made-up street name, like Deerfield or something, I don't know, but what they can do is have a slip that the city would generate to show that is the house that came from that condemnation.
And you sure that was...
Give that to them.
Absolutely.
And then they, we send the bill to the city for a half-price number.
They would have the condemnation contract.
They don't have that form, they don't get to come in.
Exactly right. That would be, that would stop someone from Iowa or Allen County or wherever else coming in.
All of their, um, condemnations are bid out, so all Diane needs to do is give you the bid awards, and when we get billed for that, Jennifer can, can match it up and we roll.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I think for...
You okay with all that?
Yes, that, we'll go with it and see how it works, and if it's not working, then we'll come back to you. I, I just wanna make sure that our contractors are being honest with us, and that we're getting material only from the houses being torn down, period.
Well, they have a document from the city.
Right.
They're being honest, if they don't...
Well, and if they're trying to do that, that theoretically could be criminal.
Yes, I understand.
Theft of service.
I just wanna make sure.
Codes should be involved, so unless the house is torn down, um, they need, they need to know when the house is being torn down, the time period.
Absolutely. Yes. So, does that need to be in? That's why I'm wondering if that needs to be in the writing.
That is, uh, that's kind of a resolution. The procedural stuff, I think, should be between Eric and the codes people, and I mean, we don't need, that would turn into a huge contract.
Yep. I, uh, make a motion to, uh, allow Chairman Harris to sign the agreement for the landfill C and D pricing. City of Fort Scott, shared services, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, we're gonna basically trade some C and D for some condemned housing for, I can't remember, is it thirteen, thirteen, thirteen plus mi, thirteen plus, fourteen plus or minus acres? Somewhere near. That's next to our, uh, current landfill, that, you know, when we're all gone, maybe our kids will need it, so...
It'd add several years to it.
Yes, it adds a lot of years to the current landfill.
Second motion, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Am I good? Yep.
Yes, thank you, Eric. Okay, thank you, Shane.
Yeah, the, the city, yeah. The city needs to sign.
Want to back down, or?
Yeah, I was gonna...
Okay. Thank you very much, Shane.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. Public comment? Okay, Mr. Nelson, lie. Have a chair, please.
It's almost nine o'clock, I will try to be pretty brief.
Yeah.
Uh, just a couple of notes I was taking when we were talking about the sheriff's office and mainly...
Pull the microphone up to you, please. Thank you.
Is it working?
Yeah.
Yeah, the red light's on, it should be working.
Okay. First thing, you had mentioned overtime and other places, and the sheriff basically said staffing, just to give some perspective, and I'm not advocating that Bourbon County needs this by any means, I'm just saying, uh, Lynn County, they have six SROs that cover shifts, they have three detectives that cover shifts, and then they have two, they're bailiffs, but they're, they're technically sheriff's deputies, they cover shift. I think that's like eleven deputies they have. That's why they don't have any, any overtime, hardly at all. Also mentioned was deputies in the city. That might have been addressed a little bit, but just so the public knows, the meth seizures and the, all the arrests, all the search warrants that are done, whether it's county or in the city, that can't be done without deputies initiating traffic stops in the city. What I don't think a lot of people understand, search warrants and meth seizures, um, search warrants from, for houses and everything else, it all comes from traffic stops, almost without fail. And the traffic stops need to be made in the city, not exclusively, you know, last year, a traffic stop was made by me and the Devon area. The guy had cocaine and went straight to the city, that's where the guy bought it. So, that's why deputies have to be in the city, you know, Fort Scott is obviously within the sheriff's office jurisdiction as well. Touching on crime rate, you would ask if, uh, crime rate had increased that much. Crime rate, crime rate hasn't increased necessarily, crime rate is soaring and always has been, it just looks like it increased, uh, the more proactive you get, you know, more, less people are getting away with selling meth than they used to, and that gives the appearance of, you know, the crime going up. It's, it's not actually going up, but just more meth is being seized. SRO, I, I think SRO is very important, should be in Fort Scott, should be in Unitown. I think what the sheriff was kind of arguing last year, whenever it was, about the county giving money to help two thirty-four, I think his reasoning was, we're looking, you know, the grant, Unitown has a grant, or the sheriff's office had a grant to put an SRO in Unitown. If the grant were to expire, they wouldn't have an SRO unless a new position were filled at the sheriff's office. Well, the city, they already have a, an SRO, so they wouldn't be, you know, you'd be getting, as opposed to two in Fort Scott, and there'd be none in Unitown, where the, where that not to be funded.
Four hundred and eighty students and twenty-one hundred students, so keep that perspective.
Good point, that is, that is good perspective, and another thing, just to keep in mind, and I'm, I want them both.
I do too.
Um, but another thing is, Fort Scott PD has three, if not four, sometimes four officers on shift every day, as opposed to two, and they only, they have a lot shorter distance to drive, so it, you know...
Well, there's pros and cons, yeah.
Pros and cons, I want them in both. And then a comment was made about all cops having the same training, they all have the same basic training, but the, I love Fort Scott PD, I work for them right now, um, but they have an entirely different experience than the sheriff's deputies. The sheriff's deputies are not constantly responding to dog, dogs-at-large calls, the call volume is lower at the sheriff's office, so you have more, deputies are more adept at investigating and doing proactive stuff, like getting drugs, than the Fort Scott PD, because a lot of times, the only thing they have time to do is go call to call to call, so they're not developing the same skills and, uh, resources as, as deputies are, so that's why they ask for assistance sometimes. Yeah, the forty hours a year, um, is what the training is after the academy, all cops have to have forty hours a year, and, you know, that varies, a lot of, there's a lot of people at the sheriff's office that try to get as much narcotics training as they can. The jail, gonna touch on that real quick, it's not a, I don't think it'll ever be a huge moneymaker, um, but it is, I think it was a good idea, because it's, it is saving money, wh, whichever way you look at it, because prior to the jail, you were gonna have inmates housed out of town, so even if it is all our inmates, it's still, those are inmates that don't have to be housed out of county, 'cause the, the amount of people going to jail is not gonna go down, unless you have deputies that just like to park their cars and sit, which we don't want. The bond schedule being removed, it actually, in my opinion, hasn't affected law enforcement terribly, because we pretty much don't arrest people for weed anymore. I'm not letting it known to the public that they can get away with having weed, but, uh, it's mostly, you know... We don't generally, mostly arrests are meth-related, if it's drugs, it's, it's usually meth. So, and that was, people couldn't bond out on that before anyway. You know, you could drive them all suspended, we don't often arrest people for that, and when I say we, I'm talking deputies in general. So, it didn't affect it too much. Usually don't arrest for misdemeanors in the, in the first place. Ann had asked about seizure money that the sheriff's office has. I don't know, I don't work there anymore, I don't know exact numbers, but I know, a couple of years when I was there, it's up to eighty thousand, sometimes in the seizure budget. But there's state and federal laws that dictate how that money is used. It can be used to buy vehicles, it can be used to pay, um, salaries to get new deputies, and I think the reason those laws are in place is so you don't have a department that's basically funding itself through seizures, 'cause, you know... Yes, gotta have some safeguards.
You might want to go out and give Bill a little life support out there.
You can just look at the arrest records and...
I understand, thank you, thank you.
Yes, um, that's really all I have on that issue.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Election coming up. Any other public comment, Ann? No? Yes, sir.
The only, the only public comment I have is, uh, and maybe this is just an HR question, because they talked about positions that come open in the county, and I don't see those positions in a newspaper, and I was just wondering where they advertise, is it standard procedure, like if you need a clerk here, or is there a standard procedure of places that you actually advertise for people?
Absolutely.
Now, myself, uh, and I know this is a different venue, I recruited for the Army four years, and I'm gonna tell you what, we never left one rock unturned. In fact, I got in trouble because I paid for my own dad in, in a high school...
Yeah.
Annual, you know, that was the Army recruiter. But you, like you say, you go to the places that are most cost-effective to get the most money, but to find those individuals.
I have seen public works, and I've seen Patty run ads in the newspaper wanting help, so we do.
We do on Facebook, and on the website.
I know, we have, just last week, some public works positions.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yes.
I haven't seen the sheriff's department, or, or the hospital, or any of the other positions that come open in the newspaper, and maybe I need to get on Facebook and look at other places that, where these positions are. But I was just curious, because normally there's a standard, and most places have a standard set place that they advertise or find employees, you know...
I would say, I mean, elected officials can, we can't control where they do their ads. They run their own department. And Eric's full, I think he may have one or two positions open, maybe?
Patty's got one open.
You know, um, and I, and I can't speak for, for Bobby, but, um, I think he's had more success on Facebook in the past than any other avenue, I believe is what he told me, but we'll let him address that next week.
Thank you.
Ads, Bo, uh, Bill, just, he didn't listen. It was, it was just where, where Bobby was advertising for open positions, and I'm pretty sure he told me that Facebook was one of the places he got a lot of, a lot more response than anywhere else.
We have it posted on our Facebook page, with people that will share, we have quite a bit of followers on our Facebook page, uh, on our webpage, it clicks on there, takes you right to the application itself. There was discussion regards to the cost of the Tribune, uh, still up in the air on that.
I've seen it, I've seen it on Facebook personally, so...
It's pretty much just been everywhere, it just depends on people sharing it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Ashley, could you review your, uh, early voting schedule, 'cause it's not clear to be finished? I noticed you have a sign out here that says, reserve the date of the twentieth, what are the other days we're gonna have early voting?
It's gonna start on the twentieth, and it'll be Monday through Saturday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, until noon on the first. Did you have that on Facebook at one point? Courtney's been putting stuff on Facebook, so I think she put something about it was gonna start on the twentieth. I don't know if she had the, the rest of the hours.
But we're gonna do it on Saturday again?
We're doing two Saturdays, all day, since we had a good turnout last night, we're gonna extend it and see how it goes.
Commission comment? If you want to, uh, move forward or look into pricing and building a fuel island, that sure give us a blessing.
Uh, yeah.
Right now, it looks like we could save eighty-two cents a gallon.
Yeah.
What prices we got today, and folks, twelve to fifteen deputy cars, that's a lot of fuel, it's a lot of money, so...
I think it's worth looking at the cost, and, I mean, and you have to have fuel cards and stuff like that, so they can access it, yep.
Uh, if you don't have a problem, then I'll ask Eric, step back in and maybe put the numbers together for us. Eric?
Can we know what the history of the fuel price difference has been? I mean, is there a...
Well, the information that Eric got us today was three seventy-seven a gallon.
It is, it is, uh, it's a, it's a significant, the higher the price of fuel, the bigger the savings is. When it gets down to two dollars a gallon, it, it, uh, it's in that thirty cents.
We would like for you to...
Yes, exactly what you said.
We would like for you to put the plan together to possibly building a fuel station at the sheriff's department.
Okay.
With the correct burning and everything that satisfy the fire marshal.
Okay.
And that means for the deputies to get fuel easily.
Okay.
So, if you would review that and give us a price...
Sure.
Sometime in the near future.
Yep, I'll see what we can do. Okay, alright.
Thank you. It's like you don't have enough to do, right? I don't have anything else, Clifton?
I'm good.
We're gonna adjourn unless you have something, folks. Okay?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, folks.